Maybe, maybe we should just give it a try.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the September 30th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to nine thirty PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you have received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for here. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will come forward, state his or her name for the record, and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative have spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application is called. New applications will not normally be heard after nine thirty PM as the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting. But should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded and will become a matter of permanent public record. Okay, the first item tonight is a continuation from last month's meeting from August nineteenth. Item twenty-one dash zero eight one nine zero three, the city of Norwalk. Andy, would you read?
Can I, can I get a roll call officially, please?
Oh, officially. This evening, we have myself, Lee Levy, Andy Conroy, Ted Diesel, Marilyn Alvin, and Chris Gavro ladies. Timmy, you're on mute.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Andy, would you read the item tonight, the first item tonight? Andy, you're on mute.
Continuation of twenty-one oh eight one nine oh three, city of Norwalk. Requesting variance rear setback, two hundred and twenty-three feet required, sixty-eight point four five proposed. And the reference is section one eighteen dash fourteen fifty, sub two. It is for a new school and a triple A residence. The property is located at twelve Noah Lot Lane, District five, block thirty-two, lot thirteen. And the applicant is seeking a variance for the required rear setback for a new school building. Typically thirty feet rear setback for the zone, but much greater due to the stipulation of the special permit requirements, which is the reference that I gave. Cranberry Elementary School was built in nineteen fifty-nine. And we had the applicant present his drawings and explanation of the layout. Analysis and findings, a case for hardship could be made due to the need to reserve the existing building until the new school is completed, as well as the goal to maintain existing wooded areas. In addition, roughly half of the parcel contains weapons. Application has been made to the inland wetlands agency conservation commission. That's it.
Hey, the representative for the project, Alan Lowe, is online with us. Alan, please go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Alan Lowe on behalf of Save Norwalk and both education, excuse me. Um, it's just a, because it's been about a month and a half and that's, we do have a presentation. We're trying to keep it under fifteen minutes, but ten to fifteen and a half minutes or so to just update everybody. From the last meet public hearing, there was some opposition or concerns about projects. And we were directed to meet with the adjacent property owners altogether. It's a corner lot and we have probably about twelve to thirteen adjacent property owners. But on this side of property where the, the setback is impacted, it's about four property owner, maybe four or five, maybe. I forgot what it is. I think it's about four. Before I, Lisa Yates is our architect and she's going to present a update, the summary of what the requests is, as well as the update of some of the conversation we've been having with the neighbors. Before she started, one thing I wanted to note to the commission, to the board is that the last meeting, there was a number of questions about legal notice, whether, whether neighbors notified correctly. There was a problem. The reason being is that when we issued the legal notice, we went to the city's GIS map, which is a city mapping system. We click on our property and then we click on the Jason property owners. So the list of Jason property names shows up and we send legal notices to all those, all the people that are listed on the, on the, on the GIS map. The problem is that we did not realize that it's not a live link to the census office. So this, that information updated manually from time to time. Therefore, there was an error in terms of legal notice. So for this meeting, we had sent out, I think twice, on a new certified mail, notify the adjacent property owners. So I have to believe that, I'm very sure that all the process we've done in terms of verifying the property, property owners been notified, we have completed that. So I think, I just want to put that behind us because there was an error and we corrected it. So without any further ado, Lisa, can you go for the presentation, please?
Absolutely. So I'm Lisa Yates from Antonazi Associates. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So as introduced, this is our property, it's a thirty-three acre site. The wooded area contiguous with Cranberry Park. And it is our goal to stay within this, this yellow boundary in order to preserve our wooded parkland. This was an early goal of the project. This is the existing school. This is Noah Lot Lane. This is Field Street. And then this is Grumman. And we have one, two, three, four, five neighbors, two more up here. So. Next up, we have fifteen acres of wetlands on the site. As, as you can see, they're spread throughout, especially this sort of northeast portion of the site against Field Street. And when we look at our buildable area, it, the circle sort of squeezes into an egg shape in response to the flagging of these wetlands and the upland review area, the wetlands occupy at least half of the site. So next, this one I didn't show last time, you already read from the regulations. I pulled this portion of the regulations because this is sort of our agenda. This is our North Star in how we're approaching this and, and going through it to explain it to the group here. We're talking about our requirement of the regulations is the rear yard setback. And then we're going to talk about the difficulties and hardships and how we think this is a solution in harmony with the general purpose of your regulations. So what's the variance set? The variance set is for the rear yard setback. We have special standards because this is a non-residential use in a residential zone. So the way it's written here, you take the minimum setback specified in the residential schedule, which is thirty feet plus six inches for each foot of building length in excess of forty feet. And here's the math. And we come up with two hundred and twenty-three feet. And at the closest spot to a neighboring property line, we have sixty-eight point four five feet. And then, and I'll zoom in on this shortly, but this green line here, cutting through the orange of our building. So this is the existing school over here. Now we're, we're flipping the location so we can build the school in the open buildable area with the kids still in the existing school. And here's our green line is the two hundred and twenty-three foot setback. And then this, this magenta line back here represents the thirty feet. So we're, we're more than twice as far away as we would be required to be if we were a house. Also versus if, if Noah Lot Lane were the front yard, if this had been subdivided, then this would be a side yard and even for a special permit, the requirement would be forty feet. So to get a little bit into front yard versus side yard, the way the regs are written, then if you're, if you're looking at a quarter lot, this, this, uh, this is for front yards. We're required to comply with the front yard setback on the narrow street front, which translates into Field Street becomes the front yard. This, this side Cranberry Park and a few of the Grumman neighbors, it's the side. The, the parkland on the other side is the other side. Well, it's, it's Noah Lot Lane is the other side. And rear is over here, the neighbors along Grumman. So to get into it a little bit more, here's the new design again, it flips the building with the ball field. And when listing the hardships and the practical difficulties, we found it useful to sort of flip them on their head. So if we get this variance, we can turn all of the potential hardships and difficulties into positives. The variance allows us to preserve the wetlands in the neighborhood. And in the intervening time, since the last time we were in front of you, we were approved by the conservation commission. And we're able to preserve this forested area with, I mean, for, for a big building like this, we would have had to, if we were building out, obviously in the wetlands, which we couldn't do anyway, where there would be clear cutting. And we're able to keep the school occupied. So just zooming in a little bit, because I know it's hard to see when we're looking at the full site. Existing school again is here. You can still see we're within this, this yellow circle, which is our goal area. And one of the other things that we're able to do is take the, once the kids are out and moved into the new school and we're able to develop the side of the site, we have this long parent, parent loop drop off, which will ease congestion on Noah Lot Lane and drop off and pickup time. And we're able to reuse portions of the previously existing parking areas. And it just fits nicely into the buildable area. So why are we putting this, keeping this school in this area? And unlike, unlike some other kinds of special uses, this is a neighborhood school, so it has to be in the neighborhood. So it's, it's sort of automatically a special use that's in a residential zone. And why is it the size it is? It's sixty-two thousand three hundred square feet is a rounded number. But the size is dictated, it's strictly dictated by the state to, to serve a specific projected number of our neighborhood children served. It's four hundred and ninety-seven for the school. And now the next section of this gets into some of the questions that we've been asked. How carefully have we looked at the site and the position of the building? So this is sort of a tour through the evolution of our site plan. So back in December, when we were nailing down the grant with the state, this is when the building, we decided, the decision was made to make an all-new building and it was located alongside the school. We experimented with rotating the building different, different ways. And you can see we're looking, actually, we were looking at different permutations of the south end of the building. And here, it's a little bit hard to see, but we have the first, one of the first site designs. And then we ended up straightening out the building and you can see evolution of the site design. This one has the loop is smaller and we're trying to put the ball field up here. We have two tennis courts, another smaller loop, more parking, another series of smaller loops. And then we finally started getting the length for the drop-off lane that we really felt would make a difference when we, we came into this general site plan, which is very close to where we are now. And this is, we were working with the fire marshal, the fire marshal requires access to three sides of the building. So this was sort of the first look at that. And then this is much closer to what we have now with the driveway extending back here. And all along this building is, you know, right here and you can, it's hard to see here, but there's the setback line in the middle of the building. So another question, why can't the new school be built closer to the existing school? Which is a reasonable question. And we looked at that and actually that was one of the reasons you see some of the versions before we're rotating the school. But really the pinch point is down here, so we need to keep the drive, the bus loop open to allow the school to operate. And you can see this dash line here is the new building. And we did an analysis of what it looks like when we excavate to put in the foundations. And typically, hopefully this dash line here will represent the limit of excavation at the proper slope. But due to the soils conditions, we have boring reports on site. There's a very good chance we're going to have to go down as far as nine feet. These may become deeper, the hole becomes bigger. If this is really truly a site fence, this would actually, a hole this deep would actually require a little bit of shoring. So a person could walk by. But this is fifteen feet and that's, that's what we have in these areas where we're tight. And actually, consume us in a little bit. We've got, but we have twenty-four feet here and about twenty-one feet here. And so this allows for access to the existing school, there's existing mechanical back here at the existing school. So we need to get a vehicle in there. And then this perimeter of the school, the school is not sprinkled and has doors out of every classroom, this needs to be maintained for egress as well as they use it for play. To the next one here. So the next, what, what's the height of the building? And from a zoning point of view, the answer is fairly simple, the upper roof is thirty-one feet. But we did go through and mark off parapet heights, which are a little higher than the roof sometimes. And back here at the closest area, which is sixty-eight point four five feet from the neighboring property line is the back end of our gym, which is twenty-one feet high. And then we go up to the main gym is here with the thirty-one foot parapet. And then this volume here, that's a thirty-one foot parapet. And we sort of show what that looks like here in this rendering, this is the front of the building. But the thirty-one feet typical parapet is sort of the mass, the main massing of the building. And we pop up here with a four-foot parapet at a stair at a classroom. And then the entrance area is more like twenty-two feet. So these are, the thirty-one feet is, so as a school per the regs, we're allowed up to fifty feet, but we are, we're below what we need to be for AA residence zones if we were a house, which is thirty-foot max, thirty-five feet max to the roof. And then last, this is, this is less about the position of the building, but more about questions that were asked about the, the site amenities, potentially noise-producing site amenities that are provided by the new design. So we looked at the old design, I mean, the old, the current situation versus what we're proposing. And so the yellow here, this is, this is hardscape that could be used for player egress. And that becomes a play area, which is also a fire truck turnaround and part of this access drive for the fire trucks. The tennis courts, we had two. And they were forty-seven feet from the property line. Now we have one, we're about seventy-one feet from the property line. And the biggest thing is this, this bath, the, the ball field was moved to the other side of the building. And last up, we look, we are providing some additional trees for additional screening with our neighbors. So these trees here that are in the darker green have been added since the last time that we presented to you. And this is a minimum number of trees proposed for screening. And these, these are sort of where we think we're, they're going to go, but we're going to work directly with the neighbors and make sure that they're sighted appropriately so that they really do the job and, you know, screen view corridors that exist. And, you know, there are a lot of trees here already. So the trees that we're proposing are evergreens, so that when the leaves are down in the winter, this will still block some of the views. And Alan, if you'd like to jump in and, you know, reiterate anything that I might have missed.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to finish up quite a couple of minutes. Um, I think we've been talking to neighbors, there was, I believe, three meetings. I think, I think one positive thing to come out is that the city recognizes that even though we recognize that the school is a very unusual use for AAA resident and, but only people that build schools, generally speaking, is the city. This is a huge building and relative to this, in the AAA residence zone, is sixty-three thousand, sixty-two, sixty-three thousand square feet. We recognize that and I, and we are every intention and propose this to provide the proper screening, visual screening for the Jason property owners. Again, when I say a Jason property owner, typically, I talk about four, the reason they really did, but the, but, but the property owners. So it's not, I mean, there are other neighbors nearby, but in terms of directly flooding somebody, I think we have only four properties. In any event, I'll go as to, this plan shows the minimum amount, I'm repeating, I'm repeating Lisa a little bit here. These are recognized, we look at the existing evergreens around the properties in the wood areas. And we feel that this is the minimum we need to do. But we are happy and willing to continue a conversation with neighbors so that we can potentially place these trees differently to, to get the maximum screening that's to the benefit of the neighbors. So we are looking at evergreens and they're fast growing. We're looking at minimum eight feet tall, so we got started, good point. Also, these trees, the way we space them is really based on the five-year goal kind of thing. So that the tree doesn't, we don't plant it today and it's touching each other. We plan about five-year growth rates, so that in five years, they should be touching each other to provide full screening. Because if you play too close together, they'd be just, they'd be growing into each other in five years. But yeah, we will continue to do that. There were one other thing that we didn't mention here is that there was a construction, a dumpster location was ran against the one, the property owner. We are, we have proposed and, and there's no issue with it. We will, we will try to keep this close to the loading dock area with the service entrances with the cafeterias, we're going to move the dumpster over there. Lastly, the one item that we haven't fully agreed with each other is the location of tennis court and the two basketball hoop, I wouldn't call it, I would not call it basketball court because they really are full court, they just a couple of baskets, the kids will shoot basket in. The neighbors would like us to move it to the other side. But from a functional operation perspective, with the school, school community, they would like to keep it over there because the gym and cafeteria is a lower part of the property, of the building. So on days they want to come out and play, it's more convenient. So that's, that discussion will continue, but we would, we would, but at the same time, we are not changing the plans as we submitted to the ZBA at this point. But the city, for the mayor's office, as we do continue discussion, most, mostly, mostly with the school community to talk about whether we would consider moving the, the tennis and basketball court. But again, we are not changing our current plan as submitted. We would like to continue to request this variance. And I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, Alan, first question I'd like to ask is regarding the tennis court and the basketball area. Are these going to be lit for night play?
They are not lit facilities, excuse me, they're not lit. In fact, what we're doing is that Lisa, you can point to the area, we're actually putting a gate up. Certain city property, pop property behind building, there are tendency to, for people, for, for public to, you know, hang out in certain area. And typically what we do is we put a gates at the entry point on this five, five emergency drive. So we put it right there so people cannot drive to the back. As we have no intention of using these at nighttime or evening time. And furthermore, by putting a gate in, we restrict access, it will be a game with a lock on it. So emergency vehicles, when they come by, they will cut the lock. Other than that, there's no vehicle access to the back.
Yeah, the lighting, the lighting back here is only for the access drive, there's a pull light. And that's all, that's all full cutoff lighting.
Other questions from the board?
I, I just have one. Alan, is, is the timeline for the build-out flexible or is it on a strict timeline? I'm just curious.
Um, I, as I know, the lot, the timeline we have is very restrictive. I didn't want to sound like I'm pressuring the board to make a decision or anything like that. At the same time is that we are scheduled right now to go up to the state, finish the construction drawings. We are halfway or whatever we are, we are scheduled to finish the construction drawings by end of middle to end of November. And then we are planning to go to state for approval to go out to bid in early December. We are looking to go to bid in January, it's coming back in February and common council approval in March, so we can start construction in April. The construction is going to take about a year and a half, a little less than that for the, for the new building. We're looking to open the new building by August of two thousand twenty-three. So when the, when the kids come back in the fall two thousand twenty-three, they were going to a new building and then we can start demolition existing building and to start construction, the parking lot, the, the parent drop off and also as well as the, the field and all. So winter scheduling and also construction, mid, mid-school season, we would like, our goal is to have, to still then come back in September to go into the new building. And mid-semester move, it's much more difficult. And also it affects us because now we are going to another season because winter time, we couldn't do paving and things like that. So there's impact on us in terms of time, time and money. If we delay this project.
Another question, Alan, in working with the adjoining property owners and the placement of the newly proposed evergreens, is the number of evergreens fixed? Or can you juggle that budget to add trees as may be needed or requested by the property owners?
This, this came up, excuse me. Very, my second. This question come a few times. As I indicated in writing here, we are, this is the minimum amount that we're looking to do. The placement of this is very, there's some thoughts behind it, the type of evergreen users, we thought about it too. We are committed, we as in me personally, as well as the city is committed, it is a big building and there's no question, there's no denying about it. It's a, it's a huge building for AAA resident. We will, I will continue to communicate with the neighbors and if, we have proposed probably like twenty-five to, I think it's about twenty-five, twenty-seven trees.
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five. There's no issue for us to put additional tree as long as within, like a better word, reason. I mean, we are, I'll go here is to, to, to block the view corridor so that the adjacent property owner sitting in backyard doesn't have to look at this building because it's a huge building. I have an interest in doing this besides just meeting requirements, the reason, if we're going to do this screening, I want to be effective. I don't want to put these trees in and then, and then the neighbors still not happy. So I really do want to meet with them to figure exactly where we want to plan them. If they want to put it the way along the property, along property line, we will do that. So I don't think there's any issue in terms of screening. But this is really for views, sound barrier is a very different issue, but we will look at it, I would look at the sound portion of it. But I'm not so sure, sure that the tree can actually block sound. So. So again, we will add more tree as needed, as requested, uh, for, for, for visibility. And we will consider sound barrier, but I'm not sure that would be effective, but we will have that, I will have that conversation with the neighbors.
Okay. Board have further questions?
Yeah. One of the issues that was brought up by the neighbors was the sound issue. And it struck me as a little odd that we're putting things on to the Grumman side. That could be noise producers only because. Of the position of the building. The building is a big ask. Um, with two hundred and twenty feet required and your sixty-eight and a half feet. Um, setback regardless of what you think about it, that's actually the code. And to get a variance, you need hardship and hardship can't be because you're building a building while you have the old building still there. Because that's a self-created hardship and we can't approve one of those. So I'm looking at it as a park as well as a school. And there are park functions there that you want to maintain regardless of whether there's a school there. And those park functions could all be put on. The opposite side of the building, all of them, all the noise producing ones, uh, and that would, uh, lead me to want to vote for this. Uh, even with the variance being such a large ask. But not doing that and still asking for a huge variance. Um, just doesn't quite fly with me. Thanks.
Anyone else? With questions? Okay, I'm gonna ask, are there any members, any? Others that are present? Online that wish to speak in favor of this project? And hearing none.
Well, hold up, uh, there, if you would like to participate, please raise your hand. I see there's three people so far. Um, I'll just go by the first one that was raised, so this is Justin Matley, um, just. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi there, my name is Justin Matley, my address is for Cindy Lane. Uh, and so I'm a member of the SGC at Cranberry, I'm a father to a first grader there. And a soon to be kindergartner. Um, I, I've lived in Norwalk for approximately eight years. I'm volunteer in the community, I'm heavily involved in the NPS, um, I'm a business owner, um, here in town. Um. It's, I completely unders- understand this is a huge undertaking and it's a large ask. Um, and obviously, reconstruction issues render all sorts of complications. This has been asked for approximately. Certainly ten years and upwards of a. Of a generation. Of students at this point, um, it's clearly a complicated project, it hinges on. State bonding that is not. Not permanent, um, we have that lined up, um, like currently and very thankful that we, we have that lined up, but it's not forever. Um, it's obviously one half of the property is wetlands, but actionably, it's more like two-thirds of. Of the property based on where it's, um, it's approximated. Um. I am very much in favor of. This project. Um, for a variety of reasons. Um, it's another addition to entice. Further. Homeowners and contributions of our, our community in the area. Um. The current school has no central AC, has, um, has power that is unequipped. To handle modern additions. And it's long time that we make this, this happen, I, um, I have. A huge amount of empathy for the surrounding. Um. Um, surrounding property owners, I under- understand the questions and some of the. The concerns, um, regarding that, and I would have those questions as well, but ultimately. The community at present. And the future livelihoods of the community and of our students, um. Is. Would wholly benefit from this, this project. Oh, and one more thing to add really quick, I am a sound engineer with twenty years of experience, um. Certainly leafy trees, but also evergreens as well. Do produce a, um. Anywhere from a. Twenty to forty dB block of. Of atmospheric sound, so there is some benefit both from a visual standpoint and from a sound standpoint to have. High bearing trees in the surrounding area, so, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Justin. Tammy, would you allow the next speaker in?
Sure, there's Pam.
Hi there, um, thank you, Justin covered a few things that, um, I wanted to say.
Would you please fully identify yourself?
My name is Pamela Schneider Young, my address is for Kristen Lane, um, my. Fourth child is currently attending, uh, Cranberry School, we had three go through the school already and graduate. Um, my daughter would actually graduate before this new school and I just want to point out that we are completely supportive. Of this new school as we've been begging, pleading for it and supporting, um, an upgrade and new school since, um. Since our kids were little and going through, some examples of the problems. Sending kids to school, working full-time, two parents, start school the next day, first day of school, oh, kids have to cut picked up because the school is too hot. Why can't they get air conditioning? There's not sufficient electric, the school has to be upgraded, it's a whole overhaul, it's just, it goes on and on, but I've, I've. Seen the work, I know so many people who have spent countless hours. This, you know, sweat, blood and tears putting into, uh, pursuing, um, getting to this point and these, uh, folks have done such a wonderful job, the drawing's beautiful. Uh, the size is clearly planned out to support what the state is, uh, saying that we need as far as a school. I fully understand it and can empathize with, uh, homeowners being concerned about something being built close to their homes, however. They bought the homes adjacent to a school, when they bought it, the school is there and it's a school property. I personally, I bought property, um, we have wetlands on our property, I would love. To have things change, but I have to deal with it because I bought. A home that has wetlands on it and I have to deal with it, so, uh, some, some key things. That were said about, um, like concerns about sound, I, what I actually noticed with the wonderful new design is that. Shifting all the play area away from the home seems to be, uh, would be beneficial to move sound away from there. Um, I, you know, I, it just, knowing so many kids and looking for the betterment of the future. Uh, better schooling environment, uh, better situation for the teachers as well as the students. Um, there are so many needs of the school that is from the nineteen fifties that is ill-equipped for so much that they need now. Uh, most specifically, some of the security, uh, factors that were brought up in the meeting the other day. Um, you know, there are things that we need to address in today's world, uh, that this building really seems to address and it would be so unfortunate for just, what, two homes? Two families to kind of affect and. Keep something from moving forward after all this work and all this money, taxpayer money that has been put to, to going to it this far. Uh, to be stopped, you know, for. Just two families, uh, when it could help hundreds and hundreds. And help our community moving forward and help property value and all that, it's a beautiful property. I'd love to know what would happen if, seeing all those, my last thing to say, I'm sorry, I know there are others. With all the iterations, um, and Lisa, thank you for showing all the work that went into it and looking at every possible option. Of how to position this school, um, it, it was very thoughtfully planned out, it seems to me. Um, and it just seems that I know what happens with government if this doesn't get passed, so I'm guessing it puts on the back burner and, um. I, it was hinted or I kind of overheard somewhere that I would think that they might have to even, God forbid, find another property. And then what happens to this area? Do the homeowners think of that? What would, would it be sold to some, uh, commercial? Would it be a giant apartment building? Who knows what? Um, and for the gentleman who said it's not an emergency to, um. To keep the children in the school while the other school's being built, I would just say, I, I know of, uh, friends that had children that had to take classes in truck. And trailers, I, I don't know if I'm saying the right thing, but where would the children be displaced for the year and a half? Of, of the building, I mean, I think it's a very thoughtful plan how they have it laid out, I'm fully supportive, I think they did a wonderful job. And I know of countless families going through the years of each of my kids' grades, uh, that are, you know, fully supportive of this new school as well, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, Tammy, would you like the next speaker in?
We have Nicole Rios.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, would you give us your full name and address?
Yes, it's Nicole Rios and I reside at one nineteen Cedar Hurst Lane. Good evening, I currently teach at Cranberry and serve on Cranberry's SGC. As a member of SGC, I've had an opportunity to review and provide input on the current building proposal. Tonight, I want you to see Cranberry through the eyes of a teacher. It is a dream to see this new school building come to life for my students and colleagues. I understand that some are opposed to the current placement of some elements, but at this point, any changes will delay our projected opening date. We are in dire need of a new building, some classrooms have up to three teachers sharing one common space with file cabinet dividers. During heavy rains, other classrooms are flooded as water seeps in through classroom tiles. While leaking AC units continually drip destroying valuable teaching materials. We are continually putting temporary Band-Aids to help remedy building conditions. Teachers and parents have also had input in creating the state-of-the-art building for our children. We love the idea of an outdoor classroom and we are thrilled with the current proposal that includes updated wireless internet connection. Separate cafeteria and physical education space and other amenities that allow for dedicated teaching spaces for strings, specialists and service providers. As a Norwalk teacher who has taught in inappropriately sized classrooms. I'm excited to see that all students will have adequate learning space. The added tennis and basketball courts will allow for additional recess and PE space on days when our grassy field is just too wet. In addition, the baseball and soccer fields will allow for added opportunities for our students as well as our Norwalk community. Please support the current proposal. As any changes at this point will delay this much-needed and anticipated new building for our students. We ask that you not only commit to our current building proposal, but fully commit to our students, our faculty members. And the Norwalk community members who will also enjoy the state-of-the-art facility, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tammy, uh, anyone else say in? The queue to speak in favor of this project?
It looks like we have a couple more, there's Heidi Alterman and then there is one person after this that also wants to speak.
Hi, hi, um, I'm unmuted, my name is Heidi Alterman and I live at twenty-nine Sherwood Street in Norwalk in the Cranberry neighborhood, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you guys so much, I know everybody's tired, I will do my best to be brief. I am on the building committee at the school, so I've attended meetings for the past year with, um. All of the people that are leading this meeting, we as a team have worked really hard to go over every possible. Location, every possible, you know, tweak. There's been talks about moving tennis courts, moving, um, baseball fields, moving basketball nets, moving dumpsters. At every request, they have literally done their best to try to accommodate. Um, I know there is also a significant portion, I'm, I'm in this portion, that really cares about environmental concerns with this building. Um. If they were to say that they didn't get this variance, I can't imagine that they would have any option other than to go against some of the. Healthier things for the environment, I don't think anybody in this city wants that. Um, the other thing I just wanted to point out was that since I am on the building committee. Um, I was asked to attend when there was a meeting a week or two ago by the families. I, I really believe in hearing people out, they had valid concerns, I do think the building. Um, members have tried to address almost every single concern, I also think that it's okay to encourage the city. To do some type of verbal listen, we will continue to work with you during, um, building of this. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, no, nobody thought, I don't care if these families are impositioned and nobody thought, I don't care if this tree gets cut down. Or anything like that, there was literally heart and soul in every plan that went into this. They would not be asking for this variance if they did not have to, um, again, thank you so much for your time, I hope you have a good night.
Good night, Heidi, thank you. Tammy?
Next, we have April.
April, you're on mute. I hate that, I apologize, I am not a rookie at this, so forgive me. My name is April Wetterstrom and I live at Oxy Oak Lane. I've been a homeowner in Cranberry since two thousand and ten and I'm a former member of the Student Governance Council at Cranberry School. My daughter has recently quote graduated from Cranberry School and now attends West Rocks Middle School. Her last normal year at Cranberry was third grade. I am commenting in support of the new Cranberry School. Since two thousand and eighteen, I've attended numerous planning and zoning meetings, a great deal of Board of Education meetings. And have never been shy in my support of a new Cranberry School. As Justin and Pamela and Pam have even stated, I know that a new Cranberry School has been promised for at least a generation. Thank you to Nicole also for speaking up on behalf of the staff and students of Cranberry. I'm also a nonprofit professional with a national organization, Keep America Beautiful, and recognize the value and work that went into the planning of the new Cranberry School. This presentation is not lost on me and the value of preserving wetlands as well as the tree canopy. Is quite commendable and respected and so vital for the health and well-being of the entire Norwalk community. I implore this committee to take into account all that was presented tonight, including what was shared by Ellen Low as well as Lisa Yates. There was obviously an enormous amount of work completed between the years of when the city envisioned the new Cranberry School and tonight. As a homeowner and booster of Cranberry School and despite my child quote graduating from Cranberry. I am committed to ensuring the future children of Norwalk is a place to grow and learn in today's world. So I ask you and I ask the residents of Noelot Lane and Grumman Avenue, how is it possible that a sixty-two-year-old school? Should be put on hold and sent back to the drawing board? By my estimation, which I just did the math tonight, nearly twenty-five thousand students have passed through the halls of Cranberry School since it was built. How many more should endure the state of the school that's over fifty years old? Setting aside the baseball fields, the basketball courts, the size of the school, the tennis courts. And how they are all lit or used or even how the evergreens will be planted, please, how many more? Of Norwalk's future children should wait for the school that was promised to them by the mayor, the council and others in our community for at least a generation? Please tell me. I really want to share the value that it's worked to the homeowners and community, if we delay this project, it just will be devastating. And go back to the drawing board, drawing board, forgive me, not just in costs, but in commitment to the community and to our students. I implore you to consider this and go ahead with the Cranberry School, thank you.
Thank you, April. Tammy, do we have anyone else waiting to speak in favor of this project?
We have one more hand up, Brian Brown.
Hi, I'm Brian Brown, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I live at four, five, four Main Avenue, um, in Norwalk and my daughter is a fourth grader at the school. Uh, I wanted to speak in support of this project, uh, even though my daughter is not. I wanted to speak in support of this project, even though my daughter is not going to directly see any benefit from the school. I've had the last five years of being a parent dealing with the school and I know that it's out of date and it very, very deeply needs to be replaced. And I, I really want to ask the Zoning Board of Appeals to strongly consider giving the variance. This is the only solution that allows the school to be, to be built without the kids being dispersed across the city. At least the only one that I can see. I mean, maybe, maybe, who knows? Maybe there's another, another solution. But this certainly seems like a reasonable one to me. I do feel like the 230-plus foot setback is kind of a bizarre situation having to do with how this particular plot of land is recorded with the city. And I, I implore you to, to look at this situation and, and just make a reasonable decision. And with that said, I, I would, I would also like to say that I, I've spoken some with the adjoining neighbors who, I, I mean, my impression is the adjoining neighbors are 100% in favor of this school. They, they just wants a, a few what I think are reasonable concessions. And looking at the plan, what, what I would like to see myself, and, and I, I mean, maybe this would, this would help with the adjacent landowners. I, I think eight-foot trees, which were mentioned during the presentation, I, I really think eight-foot trees can be improved upon. I think that the evergreens that will be used for screening should be at least 20-foot trees to start with. I don't think the neighbors should have to wait for 10 to 15 years for these trees to mature, when 20-foot trees can be installed. In addition to that, some of the species that are noted on the plan include white pines. White pines lose their limbs within 10 to 15 years typically. I would strongly suggest that these species should be more along the lines of a Norway spruce or, or a green giant arborvitae, which would be a more compelling type of screening. Other than, other than that, I, I, I really like this plan. I really want to see it built. And, and again, I just, I, I, I'm asking, I, I think, I think you guys will be reasonable and that's, that's really all we're asking as members of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tammy, anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I don't see anybody else raising their hand for in favorly.
Okay, is there anyone as part of this hearing wish to speak against this application?
Okay, we have one, Matt Berry. He just says something.
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Thanks again for the time.
Please give us your full address.
Yeah, it's Matt Berry. I live at 2 Noelot Lane. I'm in the house that, the only other home on Noelot Lane, butts right up to the school. The whether or not we need a new school is not the purpose of this meeting tonight. This meeting tonight is a zoning variance meeting. It is about the location of the school. That's all that is relevant for this meeting. I'm sure you all are aware of that. I've learned a lot in the last six weeks since we became aware of this project. So I just want to make sure that that is understood by everybody. The homeowners that abut the property don't disagree that there is a need for the school. The plan that's been put in place is not an acceptable plan. We have stated since last, last meeting that compromise is needed. We've been extremely reasonable with the compromise that we've requested and that we, we haven't received barely any accommodations in return, despite the fact that nobody communicated to us about this before the last zoning meeting, until about five days before the last zoning meeting. The reality is, nobody is going to be more affected by this school than me and my neighbors. Many of you will be gone by the time the construction is completed. A few of you might enjoy the school for a couple of years. Dr. Masson, the principal, she'll move on. She'll enjoy it for a bit, but then she'll be gone. Dr. Estraya, I'm sure she'll move on to bigger and better things as well. Mr. Lowe, I'm sure you'll retire. Our home will be here forever. That school will be in our backyard forever. When we purchased this home, we purchased it with a school and a setback. That research was done and understood, and that's why the purchase was made. Moving forward, we, the homeowners here are going to have to deal with the construction crews day and night. We're going to deal with traffic every day, parking every day. In the summer, all of these other people, you'll go to your homes and your vacations. We're going to hear all of it. We're going to deal with all of it. We're going to have dirt flowing through our kitchens, through our HVAC systems, through our heating vents. Every day, we're going to pick it up and clean our houses because of it. That's not something that's going to impact anybody else. In the winter, we're going to look at a brick wall. So those are the realities of the situation. Now, given that, we're not against building the school. I think some people would like that story to be the story, but it's not. No one has reached out to talk to us about this up until the first zoning meeting. And now we're being told, well, we're in a big hurry and our timeline's important, so sorry, we didn't do that. Actually, we, we don't get very many sorries, but we didn't do that and you're just going to have to suck it up and deal with it. Mistakes were made. There should have been an outreach. My wife is the vice president of the PTO. There was no communication to the PTO organization that this was happening. In all the time that people were coming and going, looking at the property, nobody stopped to knock on five doors. That doesn't sound like very good community spirit to me. At our last meeting, the, the board here instructed Mr. Lowe to sit down with us and share with us the, all the considerations that were presented and why they didn't work and how we landed on the presentation that was shared. That hasn't happened until today. Today is the first day that we saw any alternate plans. So for the last month and a half, we've, we've asked for meetings, we've attended calls, we've gone down to City Hall in person. We've invited people out to Cranberry School. We haven't given the one basic thing that you guys instructed to have happen after the meeting. On Monday, we met with the mayor and with Mr. Lowe and with Ms. Maldano, Mr. Kleppen, and Mr. Livingston. We presented an alternate plan that does not, that doesn't match any of the options that were presented here today. The mayor instructed Mr. Lowe to go look at those, at the plan that we presented and get back to us with an explanation about why it can or cannot work. That hasn't happened. So we've pleaded with the city to take our perspective into consideration. We have not once asked the city to kill this project or eliminate the school. We haven't even asked them to change the design of the school. We've simply asked them to listen to our perspective. Up until the last 24 hours, that hadn't even happened. In the last 24 hours, we've now learned that trees are something that is worth considering. We instructed Mr. Lowe where the dumpster was on the plan and explained that it was a bit of a slap in the face to tuck it as close to our properties as humanly possible and got the agreement to move it. And those are the only two things that have been compromised so far, some trees and a moved dumpster. That, again, nobody is going to be more impacted by us than that, than, than these homes, and those are the accommodations we've been given. Now, we've been required since this meeting because the city has been so unwilling to listen to our perspective. We've spent hundreds of hours. We've taken time off work. We've met with the city on our own. We've spent our own money. We've developed plans. We've hired consultants. All to try to break through and get somebody to listen to us. The city hasn't been interested until literally this week. Here's what we've been told, just so everybody is clear about what we have been told. The school can be moved, but the city doesn't want to do it. The tennis courts can be moved. The basketball area can be moved. But the BOE doesn't want to do it. A brand-new gym and a $48 million school isn't good enough. They need these other things right where they are, up a bunch, up against our property. We've also been told that we can't continue to have conversations, which we're nearing really close to coming to agreement on things. But we just can't continue anymore because, well, the timeline is more important than the people. The city doesn't know how far down they need to drill in order to put the pylons in place in a wetland area. Where the school sits right now, that's recaptured wetland. I don't know what's down there. The, the, the team hasn't done the study to know it either. They're thinking maybe nine feet. They have no idea. How much is it going to cost if it's 12 feet, 15 feet, 30 feet, 80 feet? There's no plan for overages. Finally, the city has said, we just follow the rules and all we have to do is tell the abutting homeowners what's going on. There are hundreds of homeowners in the Cranberry area that have no idea what is happening here. So anyone outside of 100 feet has no clue. And they're going to deal with the noise and the, the traffic and all of these problems. Finally, the new school is bigger and has fewer classrooms. So teachers are going to have more kids in this, in their classrooms. And we're going to lose teachers as a result of this. The bottom line is that the city does not have a hardship. There's a functional school on the property today, and so by definition, there is no hardship. Now, we're willing to compromise and figure out a solution. But we need open-minded, solution-oriented conversation to do that. And again, the solution for everybody on the call who says they love the school and they love the pretty pictures and the designs, the solution does not need to include changing the school or the design of the school, or the paint, or the chairs that were shown on Monday. None of that has to change. We are very reasonable in our compromise. So I'm making a plea for you guys to please give the families who are most impacted by this a voice.
Do Matt, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said that you and other neighbors had retained consultants to develop alternate plans. Is there a reason they weren't presented tonight?
I can present them right now if you'd like. We submitted them. Look, I only got three minutes and I have to explain my perspective. Now, if you'd like me to present the plans, I can do that.
Other board members?
If it's consistent with requests for variance, yes. If it's just, I like new schools and this is what I think we should do. No, that's just too broad. It's got to be tied into
This is, this is very specific to the location of the school.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it.
All right, I see that. Screen. All right, so when we met with the mayor and Mr. Lowe and others on Monday, this is what we presented to them. So there's several options. We do have a recommendation here. Hang on, guys. Sorry about this. Where did it go? Oh, here we go. All right. Now, we hired consultants to help us figure out who to talk to and how to get our voice heard, because that was a very difficult part of this project. These are plans that we've put together ourselves. We don't have the millions of dollars that the city has to do this and we would very much appreciate, and in fact, the mayor has instructed the city to sit down and go through these plans in detail with us and tell us what works and what doesn't work. Like I said, that hasn't happened. Your first option, which is how this project started, is a renovate and place option. That is a perfectly reasonable option. It's been canceled out for whatever reason. We're not interested in pursuing that at this time, but it is an option. Another option would, would take into case some of the wetlands, but move the property further north along Noelot Lane. To our knowledge, this has never been considered. Recapturing some wetlands is a reasonable option that's been conducted in many parts of Norwalk. I don't know why it is not a consideration here. We've never been given an answer on that. Another option would be moving the school closer to Noelot Lane and essentially pushing it into kind of the existing parking lot area. Again, we've not been given a comment on to, as to why this isn't an option. You will notice that this one does break out of the existing zoning area, which again
We would still with this plan require a variance.
Yes, and we're willing to compromise if we can come to a conclusion. So if we have a seat and we can talk through these issues and come up with a solution that's going to work, then isn't that, isn't that the way the government should work? We talk it through, we figure out a good conclusion. What we've had is, this is it. We're doing nothing. Deal with it. This is what we have put forth and proposed. The reason why we think, and I can try to zoom in a little bit on this, the reason why we think this is the best option is because it essentially moves the existing plan back 60 feet north and 18 feet east. It has about 10 feet that tuck into the wetland variance area. That's it. It takes the, the basketball hoops and the tennis court and it pushes them into the front of the school where they're going to be safer, where people can see what's going on there, and they're going to attract less trouble. Having lights back here is not the issue. Having people play tennis back here is not the issue. The issue is that it will attract people who don't want to be seen to do things that they don't want people to see right up against our property. Instead, we can use this space for outdoor classrooms and gardening areas. This would give much more leeway up against the homes in all cases and make a much more and make a much more comfortable place. And it will create a sports facility that would be something that the city could be proud of, and it would be safe and secure. Again, the mayor has asked Mr. Lowe to review this plan and come back to us with, you know, how we can make this work. Talk through some of the issues. As far as I see right now, we are down to a 10-foot issue, which I am very confident can be solved. And this whole thing gets done and everybody is happy. But for the last month and a half, nobody has listened to us. So this is where we sit right now. We think this is very, very reasonable. And so we don't approve, I don't approve, the existing plan. I think that other plans can be developed to accomplish the needs of the community and be done in a way where the homeowners are taken into consideration as opposed to an afterthought.
Matt, thank you very much.
I have a question for Matt.
Yeah.
We realize that this is a park as well as a school.
Yep.
But the park activities, if you build the school, new school exactly where it is, it does create an area that could be unobserved, put it the way you put it.
Yep.
And if we took the activities that were back there and moved them out to the other side of the building, which Alan doesn't want to do, but we can tell him he has to. If that was done, would we have to start moving things 10 feet, 20 feet, or anything? Would that just suffice?
I think, I mean, the the school building itself is moving extremely tight to some of the properties. And so I think that needs to be considered in addition to that. But look, we're willing to be reasonable. We've said it the whole time. You know, if we can have some real solution-oriented discussions, I'm sure we can come with, come together with a conclusion that's going to work for everyone.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tammy, I saw Marilyn had her hand up, and I know there was some communication difficulty there. If you could just turn off your sound and just talk to Marilyn and find out what it is she wants to tell us.
You probably can hear-
I don't think so.
Oh, Tammy, no.
Think she's telling us she's fine.
Yeah, when the phone goes on, we get that swell stuff. Anyway, I didn't want to exclude a board member. She can hold up a board.
Cardboard and crayon.
Yeah.
So it looks like we have another person raising their hand. I'm not sure if we still want to discuss or continue with public comment.
I, could I just ask a question of Alan at this point or no?
Let's take the comment from the public and then Chris, I'll let you start asking your questions.
Okay.
Tammy, who's raised their hand?
We have a Matt.
Hello all, my name is Matt Forte. I live at 258 Grumman Avenue and Cranberry School is directly behind my house. The new school will have direct impact on the enjoyment of my family's home as well as the investment value. I agree that Cranberry needs a new school, but it must be built with compassion to the abutting neighbors. I'm truly disheartened at what has happened over the last six weeks since our last meeting. Up until the last 24 hours or so, we have simply been ignored by the people who are supposed to work for us, the citizens of Norwalk. Since the last meeting, we had a Zoom call with Mr. Lowe and the folks at Antonazi, which went nowhere. At this meeting, Mr. Lowe backtracked on his statement from August that he could move the basketball and tennis courts. Because we weren't being heard, we staged another meeting down at the school. We placed traffic cones and balloons to outline the back of the school, and we marked out where the basketball and tennis courts were proposed to be. It opened some eyes to the proposed schools and sports facility size, location, and the close proximity to our home. On Monday this week, we had a meeting with Mr. Lowe, the mayor, and others where we presented a plan for a reasonable compromise. Our plan consisted of a handful of minor alterations. We slid this proposed building slightly north and slightly east to increase the distance of the proposed setback. We relocated the basketball and tennis courts to the east of the new building with the other sports facilities. This would alleviate the noise pollution for the abutting neighbors and create a wonderful space for a couple of outdoor classrooms with planters, boxes, and meadows. We offered multiple dumpster locations other than the southwest corner of the property where it was proposed to be, which would have abutted three neighboring properties. We added the planting of evergreens for screening. The plan was presented, the plan that was presented at the last ZBA hearing had zero trees being planted for screening. We did all these things while maintaining full-time jobs and trying to care for our families. No one should have to go, no one should have to work this hard to be heard. Although Mr. Lowe and his team have worked diligently since Monday's meeting, they have not yet been able to come up with a completely acceptable plan. They're close, but there's still some tweaking to do. Mr. Lowe has communicated that tonight by stating the location of the basketball and tennis courts are not part of this hearing. Although we appreciate that, we also understand that there is no setback in the city of Norwalk for either a basketball or tennis court. They could go right on the property line. I want to ask Mr. Lowe to please request a continuance tonight so we can further our conversation and come up with a reasonable compromise. Pushing the vote off a week or two will not delay the project. I truly believe if we bring everyone necessary to the table together, we could come up with an acceptable solution for all parties. If Mr. Lowe does not ask for a continuance and forces a vote tonight, I ask you deny this application for a variance. As Mr. Conroy mentioned earlier, there's no legal precedent set that a hardship exists, so the variance must be denied. The city understands this as well. It was suggested to us that if the variance is denied or appealed, the city's backup plan could be to change the lot lines on Field Street, transferring property from Cranberry Park to the school in the hopes that the school would end up with more frontage on Field Street than Noelot Lane. This would allow the city to get around the current zoning laws that govern corner lots. Please, Mr. Lowe, ask for the continuance so we can get this passed in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Chris? We have Diane Loricella.
She just asked to unmute. Good evening.
Hi Diane.
Hi. You're going to hear I'm outside.
Diane, would you state your full name and address?
Yes. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella. I was hired or retained by the Cranberry Preservation Association. My business address is 304 Main Avenue in Norwalk, Connecticut. I've been a 35-year member of Norwalk, living all over the town. And currently, I'm in the Cranberry area. You have listened to both Matts, the two Matts. The Cranberry Neighborhood Association is made up of dozens and dozens of homeowners. It is not just the five abutters. They, many of these folks have been in support of the reasonable alternative plans that were presented to you tonight. But because they had children that they were tucking into bed and all of that, they could not appear today. It's very difficult with Zoom, as you all know. So we appreciate you listening to the leaders of the Neighborhood Association. That has been around since about for the last six or seven years. The last time, the last large item that was on their agenda was a zip line at Cranberry Park. That was right abutting, right next to their homes again. And we were able to convince the city after way too much work that they need-
Diane, I appreciate the history on the zip line. Please get to your issue on the school.
Certainly. So tonight, I just wanted to inform you that there are two documents that we would like to submit for the record. The first is a letter from attorney Joel Green. It was submitted today by him, dated today, September 30th, I believe. Tammy, do you have a copy of that?
I do, and it was forwarded to the board members.
Thank you very much. Secondly, and this is the difficulty, of course, of this is a difficulty of working remotely. We didn't know how to, we didn't know how to give you the documents, so we emailed them to Tammy. I asked that you consider continuing this public hearing so that you just have time to read the documents. Matt Burry did present part of our two attachments. And they were in PDF form, Tammy. Unfortunately, I can't forward them myself, but is there a possibility that you make me a panelist and I could just briefly describe the two packets that we sent?
We have the attachments. I think Michelle could share the screen probably.
Okay.
Michelle is the Zoom staff, zoning staff, and she is the Zoom host.
Okay, I'm not going to go through them all. I just wanted to show you that they do contain a lot of reasonable, a lot of hard work and a lot of reasonable suggestions. Can she do that or?
I'm waiting to see.
Okay. Nevertheless, I do, I do appreciate, and we do appreciate, the parents that spoke in favor of this tonight. I agree that they have been waiting a long time. Unfortunately, I hope that they will contact their, their elected and appointed officials who are now, of course, trying to improve the situation that they've endured for a generation. The thing is, at times, I'm hoping that this will be a learning experience and that we, going forward, there will be plans to speak with any abutters early on, the earliest time possible when the design begins. Because, because unfortunately, that did not occur as Matt and Matt Burry and Matt Forte stated. I do not know how to forward this.
So Diane, we have the, are you viewing the screen? We're sharing the slideshow. What, do you want us to go to a particular slide?
Okay, yes. Right there. So this is illustrative of how much of an impact this is having to the neighbors to the west and the southwest, but also the neighborhood. It's not just the five homes that you can see in the Google Earth presentation. It is the neighborhood. And as you can see, because of where the Antonazi associates and the staff decided to place the building, you can see the enormous contrast. And so you, we ask that you keep that in mind when you are deliberating. Next slide, please. Again, I'll be brief. In general, we just wanted, and we again ask, and we are sorry we weren't able, we didn't know how to get this into the record except for sending it to Tammy. We sent it to her just recently, in the last, I think, two hours, because we didn't know how in this kind of circumstance. So I hope that you will get a chance to read this and digest it. Please stop right here. This is very important because there were concerns by Chairman Levy and others mentioned at our last meeting. And that is the issue of why didn't the homeowners know that this was taking place and where the building was? And I won't take up all your time, but just long story short here, is that it shows that it was really only until the 2020, when monies were begun to be talked about for this school. But it was 2021 that actual money was voted on. And it was only in summer of 2021 that general public, especially in August, when we found ourselves with a certified letter, that the actual details of the location of the school, the height, the mass, and all of the outdoor basketball court and tennis court, the dumpster, and the lack of trees were, we were made aware of. So while I could, I honestly understand why, because the buzz was coming on even before 2018. Ms. Wenerstrom is right in saying the parents have been begging and begging for this. But we have to be fair to those, in those abutters and the neighborhood that just heard about the location of the school in 2021 in the details and only after we asked to see the height and the blueprints. So I think that's a very important slide. So then you'll see that Mr. Bury has already shown you the alternative so we can return to your, your kind faces on the screen. I will be done in a moment. I ask again that you oppose this particular application as presented. As many of you know, I do environmental planning. I often, you will see me at Conservation Commission meetings, and I'm on the mayor's water quality committee, and I urge and advocate for preserving wetlands and woodlands. I've often helped the Silver Mine Association over the years when someone wants to clear cut a lot for a home. The thing is, we have to include the balance of the public good, and that includes the neighbors, with taking of wetlands or woodlands in modest amounts. And the fact that the Antonazi associates were obviously by you, by you looking at their positioning of the building, that is because their client, the city of Norwalk, because I have been a consultant to two consulting firms. When your client gives you limitations, you could either take those limitations and do them, or you might lose the client. And I believe that Antonazi associates who could speak for themselves were told, here are your parameters. And one of them is, don't touch the wetlands or don't build in the wetlands. Unfortunately, that did not give you, you good people, all of the possible alternatives that could have happened. And I'm very pleased that the good, good people of the Cranberry Preservation Association have taken hours and spent personal, personal money as well as time, which is money and value, away from their homes and families to present what I think are three or four, three very viable places for this building to go, including the one that we prefer because we want to make sure that the delays will not be long. So parents, you have been misinformed. There is time because the city now must go to a zoning permit. There is time, and I will help Alan Lowe and others ask the state representatives and senator to expedite the horrible situation that happens. I feel sorry for towns and communities that go to our state to ask for money and reimbursement. We want to help that be expedited. So parents, please do not be worried. The changes we've asked should not take very long to conclude and will not cost you your school. I thank you for your time. And please look at our packets. Lastly, I just wanted to say, in order to help prove my point about when the details were known, we also submitted a link, Nancy on Norwalk article from July of 2021. That's this year. Where at that moment, the general public did not see the details. Now, possibly some select members of the school governance school, I'm sorry, the school governance committee like Mr. Matley and the the model of the school construction advisory committee, they may have seen said details earlier on, but we did not. So I wanted to tell you, as I had suggested last time, I have since filed a Freedom of Information complaint. And I got a docket number 2021-0524 because I believe that the school advisory committees should be public meetings. We did not have access to those meetings. I asked Mr. Tom Livingston, could I sit in on a meeting? That is when I was interested in renewable energy. I was told no. There was no record of minutes. The agendas are not published. So how the heck could these parents- So how the heck could these parents that spoke with you today and the other homeowners understand the details? There was no way to do so until July, August, August of 2021. With that, I thank you for your time and I appreciate you being fair-minded as well as open-minded. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
So there's, sorry, there's still a re-raise of a hand from April. We've already previously heard, I'm not sure.
She's already spoken.
All right.
I don't listen to re-questioning.
Sounds good.
I mean, that's been our practice. Once a member of the public speaks, they speak. Anyone else wish to hear her?
I don't see any other hands being raised.
Okay. Chris, I believe you had a question of Alan Lowe.
I did, and it's a bit unfair, especially at this point in the discussion, but because I wanted Alan to comment on those alternate plans. And so I know it's unfair just taking a glance at a plan, but were they ever considered? Can you comment on the plans that were shown by the other gentleman? I forget his name, the abutting neighbor. I don't, I don't know if we can put those back up, so you can take a quick glance at them.
Matt.
It's okay, I've seen them before. I see them before.
You have, so are those feasible or? I mean, can you keep the existing school while working on a different plan, or that those are not feasible, what we're showing?
Let me, is it my turn? I'm sorry.
Alan, please go ahead.
Okay. I think I, the plan the city has, we went through, this project started designing probably about December, January this year. I think what we showed before in the presentation by Lisa, you can bring that back up real quickly. I don't want, you know, this is getting late already. But at the same time is that, I want, the plan that being suggested by the neighbor is something we looked at already. So no, no, not this plan, our plan, Lisa. Before she opened this file, but what I want to say is that you're right. I mean, the city set a parameter when it designed this project to give direction to the architecture firm. We are here to protect the wetlands and wooded area in the interest of environmental as well as the neighborhood. So the way we designed this building, we drive by around the property, Noel Lot Lane and Few Street, you wouldn't know there's a change. I think that is one of our goals, keeping the neighborhood the way it is. So it's not like we are posing a new building close to the row. We are, we are keeping within the circle they always talk about. The rotation of the building, the reason that we didn't, I didn't respond back to the neighbors when they proposed plans, that we looked at it already. We had, we went for this technical reasons, why during the design phase back in, I don't know, six months ago, when we started December 2020, those options are looked at and we considered it back then. So again, when we are asked to talk, to look at what's being proposed, we looked at it. And again, we actually designed it. In fact, one of these plans is actually very similar to this, that on the last, second to the last draw, drawing, we show a turnaround circle is very similar to what they are proposing, asking us to look at. The difference, we also look at rotating building as part of this original, some of the original options. So it's not like we come up idea, we stuck to it. We actually went through all these scenarios, you'll probably get to this, the proposal in front of us. The question about the tennis and basketball courts. It's a, it's a school function as well as a park function. We had, when we designed this plan, the existing tennis court and basketball are there right now. I mean, if you look at setback issue, they are currently within the setback issue, I mean, setback limits. And we are reducing from two tennis courts to one tennis court. The basketball is not really a court, it's really kids come out lunchtime to shoot some basket. So we're not expecting these to be a weekend intense recreation facility. It's very passive. And also, the two activity that's more organized, soccer and potentially, I know the Little League doesn't play there, but for a small baseball field, those are ones that probably will get the most active recreations and they are away from the back portion of the building. So what we propose here, it's, it's not that different from, in terms of location of basketball and tennis court. In fact, the tennis court is actually a little further away. So you know, I think we could potentially find, move the tennis court and the basketball court. But I think ultimately, when subsequent to the meeting on, I believe it's Monday with the mayor, and I was asked to look at it, we actually spent about, I would say, half an hour after the meeting with the design group, to start playing around where the tennis court could be put and all that, near the soccer field. And at the end of discussion, from the school community, from the principal and from the parent, was that, and also from a council member, was that it serves the school the best when we have the tennis court behind the, behind the building next to the gym, so that the school, the kids can come out and use those facility during lunchtime, after lunchtime, and after school. So it's really, it's closer to those active portion of the building, that's a direct relationship. So I could, we can continue to look at this, but at the same time, the ultimate decision is really is to the school, because the location of it is for benefit of the school program. I don't mind continuing looking at it, but again, you know what? If the neighbor's position is that if we, either we move it or we don't, I mean, we could potentially move it, but it doesn't serve the school well, that's the issue here. So
And you mentioned that would be gated, correct? Nobody would have access to that after a certain time.
Right, would be gated, so you can't drive to the back. One of the problems have been neighborhood parks that folks come to pick up truck or something with headlights sitting in the back and and hang on, it's just some basket kind of thing, and this could be a negative impact on the neighbors. So by putting the gates in, we don't, we don't get the public opportunity to drive to the back and to create a nuisance. And that can be a walk their show, they can walk to any parks and be a nuisance. But at the same time, it's, we limited possibility we drive to the back area.
And this, and this would not be lighted, correct? That's what I heard.
It's not a lit facility.
No.
I just remind you, again, these tennis courts are there now, two of them, and the basketball.
I'm familiar with the, I'm familiar with the school, my son plays soccer there on Sunday, so I'm familiar with the setup. The current setup.
I don't mind talking, continue talking to the neighbor, but I can't promise them that we will relocate it. It's really, it's, the driving force is the school operations and use of the, of the sock of the tennis court, because a lot of times after a rainstorm and things like that, the next day, the ground is soggy. They like to just go outside and use the paved area. That's what the tennis court and the basketball area provides them. So there's a logic behind why we want it behind it. I don't know what, again, I don't want to mislead the neighbors and promise something that I can't, I mean, I don't want them to come back to, well, you know, Alan promised to look at it and, well, he didn't, he didn't agree with us, so, so I didn't do anything for them. The bottom line is, I mean, like the mayor told me to look at it and figure out what can, we can and cannot do. Physically, I think we can relocate a basketball and tennis court, but functionally, we want them, the school to be, want to keep it behind, next to the school. So I don't know, we have a, we can, we should compromise on that, but at the same time, it's, that's what's in front of me.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Alan, do you have any further statement you'd like to make to close this out?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. The reason why we didn't want to, they suggested to move the dumpster to the upper portion, northern portion of property. I responded to them that I, we can't do that, because the cafeteria is a lower portion of property. And for some reason, when the original design, we showed the dumpster right on, right at the edge of the parking lot. So we had, without any hesitation, we agreed to moving that. It's not a big deal to us and, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a benefit, it's not benefit. It's a, it's a, we solved that issue that we try to keep it away from the neighbor as much as possible, so we'll be doing that. The trees, again, we will continue to look at it and to increase, again, the number of tree 25, it's a minimum that we're looking to do. And I am and we are the city, agreed and we support, continue looking at to add more trees to it. Somebody mentioned about trees to be 25 foot high. When you stand there, your ground, your viewpoint is five foot six inches. So I recognize that, but at the same time is that, to me, the closer we put the trees to the adjacent property, the better, the better it is in terms of screening. So to extend, I can relocate these trees closer to the property, I will try to work with the neighbors to do that, so that they have better screening. Because when I put trees 70 feet away, it doesn't do as well a job as a, the trees along the property or closer to the property. So if we have, what's the neighbor to put these trees or more than closer to the property, I will do that. I think that's all I have. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. I appreciate your effort in all this. If we could get this screen closed down. Thank you. I'd like to make comment to my fellow board members and to Tammy. I think we need to put this off another month. I certainly need the opportunity to look at the submissions from the neighbors and the community association. I think the last proposal I saw from Matt was at least intriguing to me. And I want to see how this site plan can be tweaked. And then we can have further conversation with Alan.
So that's only if the applicant or, you know, Alan agrees to an extension.
Yeah.
We're capped out at 65 days in total, which would bring us to October 23rd. We do have the October 21st meeting. It is a full agenda, but I suppose we could.
Well, I don't see us getting to tonight's agenda in full, unfortunately. Andy, your opinion?
Yeah, after all the legal advice that I got from city attorneys, I realized that we have an issue, and that is if we were doing this with a house, and you can't not say that that's not a valid comparison, because it is. And we have had that come forward, where somebody says my side yard is large or my front yard is large, so I'm going to build my new house there and live in the old house while I'm doing it. And therefore, we need the variance for the setback. Well, that's self-imposed. In this case, it's self-imposed. And I've been on 12 school building committees over my political career. And that came up in multiple schools, including Royton School. And they've talked about building the new school out and where the fields are that we have, and it was sort of a park setting, and so that would kill it. I don't want to damage Cranberry Park, and I don't want the new school not to be built. But the request for variance kind of implies that the location itself is a result of hardship, because they have to keep that. No, you don't. You can actually build a new school where the old school is. It requires a whole lot more logistics and it's probably more expensive, but it could be done. So to accommodate that, to make it convenient for the city, I think they have to give up something. And the neighbors have said, in the last meeting and in this meeting, that they would really appreciate moving the basketball courts and the tennis courts to the other side of the school. And I'll tell you, I'm not voting for approval of this, even if we modify it slightly, unless that's done. Because there's a huge variance being requested, not a teeny, it's enormous. Thanks.
I would tend to agree with you in terms of the variance request. And even the best option provided by the neighbors will require a variance request. And that
Different kind, yes.
Different kind, but still a set rear yard setback.
Right.
And unless, unless, and I agree, I think it's easier to move the basketball area and the tennis court than it is to move the school, redesign the school, and reconfigure the entire site plan.
True. And I think that's the ultimate solution, so I don't even know if we have to wait a month. But, you know, I want to hear from the other board members. I'm just one voice on a five-member.
Alan, I'm agreeing with you, that's two voices. Chris?
Well, I guess my question is for you, Lee and Andy. I mean, what are the options? I mean, if the school is not going to go in the wetlands, that's not a consideration. Then you're really not left with any options. It has to go where Alan is saying. And as far as, you know, the
Well, I think what Andy and I are saying is, the school building stays where it's proposed and the basketball area and the tennis court gets moved.
But the school itself, remember, you've had several people that say they love the idea of the school. They don't even want to argue about the location of the school. But they have a real problem with the basketball court and the tennis court and some issues that they think are going to come as a result. If we move them to the other side, you got the school between them and the neighbors, which will definitely, it's a, you don't need 50,000 trees. You got an enormous school building that'll be between the sound and the neighbors.
But you know, the lighting is not an issue and the sound already exists. Like I said, I go to that field, the kids are running around on that field, they're yelling and screaming. I'm yelling and screaming for my kids. I know it's going to be closer, but the sound already exists during the day. So, and I, you have no lights, you have it gated. I mean, so you're willing to take away the play area for the kids during the day and move them to the other side. I just, you know, looking at all the schools, Nathan Hill, all of them, I don't see a big issue with this. You know, I visit all the schools with my kids, the soccer teams, the lighting, I just don't see a big issue with it.
Well, Chris, what it does do is it pushes them closer to the current plan. And then you're taking not just the general field, which is what's there now, but you're making it definitely noisy. So I, that's why I think it should move. And I think they can do it. I think they can manage that in the plan.
We, we heard both from Alan Lowe and from the neighbors an interest in continuing the conversation. Alan says he wanted to continue to meet with the neighbors in the coming month. The neighbors certainly indicated that among their priorities was that the city listened to them. I see no great harm in encouraging that active conversation during the course of the coming month. And you know, the neighbors believe that they have a conversation that, and a willingness to listen to the city's ideas. And Alan Lowe indicated that he wanted to listen to the neighbors during the coming months. And so I gathered that he was willing to consider at least just some modest changes to the plan. Well, it's this committee's responsibility not to approve the conversation, but to approve the plan. And if both sides want to continue to discuss what the plan looks like, I say we let them do that before making a decision by this board. Ted, I agree with you. I would also like the opportunity to look at the material that's been submitted today. Marilyn, can you comment at all?
I'm in agreement. I think they all need, I mean, they seem to be positive about the project. I think the people that live right around the school have some concerns and partially because it seems, even though I'm surprised that they were not approached in a reasonable amount of time. What you said, Andy, is that it sounds like this can be a doable thing, but I think you need all parties to really be talking to each other. So.
Yeah, I have no problem with waiting another month and letting them continue to talk and let us see the documents that were produced. But I do think it's a doable thing, and we need to make sure that But I do think it's a doable thing, and we need to make sure that the city is reasonable about considering the changes.
I agree with that.
I'm going to ask Alan if the city would be amenable to working with the neighbors over the period of the next month.
I think I think I'm not thinking, I'm saying of course we are. But I can guarantee that there is the, we can, we can talk, but at the same time, I don't, I don't know what what we can cannot accommodate them. I I think I think I think the Andy is right. I mean, we could figure a way, there's some great changes along the side by the entrance. So we know where the where the soccer field is. So there's some that potentially changing the role. And because great change, you may have putting retaining wall and potentially affected the upland review areas, wetland review areas. I think there's ways we can do it to put a tennis court there again. I just want to say that again, that I think physically we could do it. Do we, do we? But the reason we want to keep it in existing location really is to support the school's use. So if the school says, you know what, I I we don't, we don't, we don't care, we can put on the other side. There's no real reason why we don't, we can't figure a way to put it on the other side. This really is, it's not so much a city. I'm not trying to pass the bucket, but at the same time, if the design is based on school use operation during the day and how the school will use the use of the recreation facility for school. So if they wanted close to the, close to the, the building, and that's why we located it there. I think we can continue a conversation, I mean, bring it back next month. But two things affect us. One is that we are, we are looking to go to the zoning commission. I think next week, week and a half from now for the consideration. So we need to go through the, we're going to need to, we need, before we get to zoning commission, I believe we need to get a this issue resolved. So that means that we will push this only commission approval another month. So we are potentially instead of going out, go up to say in December, we have to go up in the January. So I don't know what, I don't know specifically what other impacts we may have in turn our schedule, but it's not really a choice at this point because I'm feeling that we're not going to get approval tonight anyway. So I think, I think that we have to do what we have to do to to maintain, to to find ways to resolve this matter. And so if you're asking whether I would request, is that what I'm doing? Request a postponement?
Yes.
I think that's all we need to do. The city need to do respectfully. And so and then we will continue a conversation with with the neighbors. And this conversation will be more than just me and the neighbors. We will do school administration because they are the one that really be affected if we don't put these, the tennis and basketball court. You know, on the other side property. I just want to remind you again, I think to set through a set before that the existing basketball court and tennis court are there right now. And in fact, the tennis court, we having set two court, we only putting one in there. And also tennis court actually further away. So it's not like we are not recognizing, you know, when we talk to neighbors, it's not like we're not listening to them. The design actually addressed some of the concern already that we are reducing the amount of recreation space on that side of the property. And also we are again, you know what? So we we are doing, just because we didn't, we listened to them and we thought, we talked about behind the scene, but if there's nothing we can offer, we don't, there's nothing to offer them. So if they feel that they ignore, I don't think they, in my view at least, I mean, they, the neighbor can say, you know, whatever their their perception is. But every time we have a meeting, we do talk about it with the design team to figure out whether we, what we can and cannot do. That's why we came to revise plan, well, not revise the plan for landscaping. That's why we look at, we go back to see whether we can till the building. We actually, again, you saw this different scenario, look at which is actually rotating the building is part of original concepts. So we did all that. So it's, it's not like, again, every time we we meet with them, there's action behind the scene. Yes, we internally, you know, with designing, we go over the options available and stuff. And for different reason, where there's operation issues or set a dumpster. I mean, the reason why we've done that end of buildings is because the cafeteria is down there. So there's those discussion that goes on after the meeting. So again, if I don't, we don't bring anything positive back to the neighbor and they feel that we are not responding. It's hard to do anything with that. But in the event, I think that I would respectfully request a postponement of the public hearing. Is this still a public hearing next time we get together?
Yes, we have not closed it and we will not.
A continuation.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Do you, do you, let me ask you one last question. So I know it's getting very late. One last question, is it, does the, does the CB have two meetings a month or just one?
Just one.
Okay, let's start some emergency.
Okay, so when's the next meeting?
Twenty something.
Twenty first, October twenty first. We already have four, I, four items on that agenda plus an extension of time requests. And if anything gets bumped tonight, we'll have to contend with that as well.
Very good.
Okay, Alan, we will accept your request for a continuation and we'll move forward on this as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. See, what do we got? It's nine thirty. We've got people that have been waiting around. Not shut down just yet.
Okay, I will, for my own personal reasons, I'd like to end this prior to ten o'clock.
Well, let's get one going then.
Okay. Andy, would you read item two, one, zero, nine, one, six, zero, one?
Avia Marjinaro and Laura Rodriguez?
Yes.
Variance of minimum lot size, twelve thousand five hundred square feet required. Nine thousand four hundred eleven square feet proposed for a contractor's storage in industrial one zone. The property located at eighty-four Point Street, District Three, Block Thirty-three, Lot Twenty-one. The applicant is seeking a variance of the definition of contractor storage yard, specifically the requirement of twelve thousand five hundred square feet required for the use. Background on October sixth, twenty twenty, the complaint was received of a contractor's yard operating from a property containing a two-family residence. Investigation confirmed that a contractor's operation landscaper was being conducted from the property. While industrial one zone allows the use of a contractor's storage yard, this property does not meet the minimum lot size requirement of twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Notice of violation was sent to the property owner of record. Due to the lack of progress to remove the contractor's operation from the property, the deputy zoning inspector issued a citation to the property owner. Property owner retained counsel represents, representation for the citation process and citation hearings at the zoning citation hearing. Counsel stated to the deputy zoning inspector and citation hearing officer, she would apply for a variance of the lot size requirement to possibly obtain the necessary permits to operate contractor storage yard at the property. Now, also some findings, while the contractor's storage yard is permitted in the industrial one zone, this property is grossly undersized for the required minimum lot size. Short by more than three thousand square feet. Further, there is a two-family residence on the property. It would be very difficult and impractical to operate even a moderate contractor business while trying to maintain parking for the two-family residence and the other requirements for the contractor's storage yard use, screening, open space containment for equipment and materials, et cetera. Lastly, the hardship is self-contained. This use, regardless of when began at the property without permits. All set. Go ahead.
Will the applicant please come forward and identify themselves?
Well, I'm attorney Nancy Aldrich. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I represent the Mandu Hano's Javier Mandu Hano, Javier Junior. Mandu Hano is on the screen with me. His mother is also in the room. We've been on the line since this began. So I understand you guys are long, hardworking people. And we have filed a motion for a variance. We first have met with attorney Oberst and worked with Mr. Hey Ducky regarding trying to work this out through that process, find alternative places, determine what it was that could be done about the property. And ultimately, there was no fine or citation awarded. And attorney Oberst gave us, my, my notes say that the violation, though it continues, there's no fine and that we were going to, they went, we went as far as we could go. And the next hearing was October twentieth, but then we got an earlier hearing. I I understand. I don't really know why it says October twentieth. Anyway, if I could give you some brief facts of the case, I know everybody wants to get out of here, but I'm just going to go through that if that's okay. The, we did a survey in January of two thousand twenty-one for the property to determine whether or not that this was a non-conforming lot, which it appears you are correct, that it is three thousand feet short of the industrial zone requirements for that, for that area. We applied for variance in July and after we had had several meetings and with, well, I had several meetings with Mr. Hey Ducky and we had one or we had two matters in front of Mr. Oberst. Though this property has only nine thousand four hundred and eleven square feet and twelve thousand five hundred is required, this property was purchased in twenty years ago, and it was purchased from owners who had conducted a business there and got a permit to put a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage accessory, which had apparently stored not only equipment, but was, it had a lift for cars or it was some kind of garage for a business. So when the owners, Mandu Hano's purchased it, they were five years into their business of landscaping, a family business. They understood that that was, A, was an industrial zone. There was a permit that was received by in nineteen eighty-six by Mr., I don't even know how you pronounce his name, but the prior owner, Old Green. And no one had said that a permit was needed, another permit was needed in order to continue to operate and have vehicles, which is what the purpose of this is, storing their vehicles in this driveway in the, in the air, in the, on the property. There is a multi-family home. Those people have also lived there for twenty years. They, they, you know, help with the business. So this is not anything, obviously, that's a problem for them. This property was operated for twenty years under Javier Mandu Hano Landscaping Services. It's a family-run business. They have approximately six employee, you know, full-time employees. And in nineteen nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the owner of the property and the owner of the business Javier Mandu Hano Senior had a very serious stroke. And he was in the hospital in rehabilitation for six months at multiple places, including Gaylord, Norwalk Hospital, Waverly. And he is out of the hospital and home, but he cannot, he's not verbal, he cannot speak, and he has very limited movement. So the son, Javi Mandu Hondo, had to come out from his job in the city. He's a young man who had a different career in mind, came out to support the family because this supports many members of the family, including his mother, who's behind him, his sisters and his father. And he ran, he, he ran the business. So the business has, this is its main operating place. And we, they then, you know, received this information that this was a non-conforming lot. So when they became aware of the issue, they employed me. We tried to find, they, they have tried to remedy the situation, find alternative locations, look for spaces to purchase that that are similar. They don't have the means to purchase something in industrial, in in this industrial zone area. First of all, there's hardly any property. Secondly, anything that there is is very expensive and it's very difficult to find space. So this is, they've been mitigating the traffic in that property since this happened and had had found friends to store trucks, but this is not a permanent solution. So this is a commercial area. The only reason that that we're here is because there's one house on that street that has complained. And the other people in the area are, there's restaurants, taco places, gas stations, car washes. It's on the railroad tracks, literally look out onto the railroad tracks. So this is not a, a really a residential area and hasn't been. And again, it's never been a problem. So in order for them to, to they can't really remedy this and unless we get a variance because moving, moving to another place is, they can't afford it. It's a hardship. It's expensive. It will reduce their ability to earn a living if they have to put all of, you know, every, their life savings into a property that can just store their trucks. So the Mandu Hanos have not put any other property structures on the property. The two garages that were there have been put in. And last thing that, the last structure that was put in was in nineteen eighty-six when that permit was received for that. And in that, in those garages, they don't store, you know, backhoe, you know, equipment or things like that. So it's, it's for the cars, for the, for the residents and, but they don't have large machinery. So what we're requesting is based on the fact that the business has been operating there. And there was some kind of permit and there was some kind of business going on before that we would like a variance. So that it's based on the fact that it's a hardship, based on the fact that it's mostly a commercial area. It is an industrial zone and at a minimum requesting time that we could get a permit. So almost like a special, a special permit or exempt, a special exemption, just to give us what you can under, I guess, one eighteen, one fourteen, ten, which grants temporary permit for two years. While we get a final permit when the moratorium ends, I understand there may still be a moratorium on that. Or permitted a change from a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. If there's any other way to do that, just because to, to continue, you know, to have to leave, it, it would, I believe it's, it's an unjust result of just one neighbor who is complaining and undue hardship. And those are the reasons that we would ask for a variance.
How long have they been operating a contractor's yard in violation?
Twenty years, twenty years.
Twenty year violation.
They bought this property in, right before nine eleven, in August of two thousand and one.
Okay. You realize, of course, that you cannot use the argument financial hardship. It's not the basis for a variance.
I understand that.
Then why did you bring it up?
Because in some of the paperwork, it says that if you, for the appeal purposes, that hardship is allowed. And so that's going to be something that.
Hardship is allowed. We listen to hardship. That's the basis of this request. You just can't use financial reasons as a hardship.
There, attorney, attorney Aldrich, there are cases, Connecticut land use law, the prohibit using, not in all cases, unfortunately, but generally prohibit using financial arguments.
Well, I didn't just say financial hardship, right? So it's a hardship for this family based on the fact that the, the owner had a stroke. They're trying to run the business in order to, you know, to coordinate other family members.
I understand that and I have sympathies.
Okay.
But it's not the basis for the request of a variance.
Can Tammy tell us more about the citation and, you know, has this been?
So, so there were permits issued in the eighties for the construction of the garage, not, not for commercial tenant fit-up use. The garages say they're accessory for two-family house. The, the complaint, you know, we have to respond to complaints, the, it has gone through the course. I don't, I don't know the full discussion, but I have the file with me that indicates that, you know, they were in front of the hearing officer. Discussion, but I have the file with me that indicates that, you know, they were in front of the hearing officer. At least a couple of times. I'm not sure Nancy made maybe more. I think initially trying to find another location, were unable to do that. So ultimately they're seeking a variance. Nancy, you mentioned an appeal. This is not an appeal. And it's not a request for a special exception. This is a variance of the definition to allow a contractor's yard. With, you know, smaller than the required lot size.
She described the exception correctly, but you were saying this is a variance request, not an exception request.
Any other board members have questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. When, when the family bought this property in two thousand one. And, and, and the. In fact, was there a commercial operation running out of that garage at that time?
It is Mr. Mandu Hano's. Relaying to me, who was around then, Javi Jun- Junior was not there, he was young, a young boy. But there, I was told, and Mrs. Mandu Hano is here. That there was a commercial business of repairing automobiles and there was a. I don't know what you call it in the garage, some kind of lift or something.
Yeah, that's what I heard you say earlier. So what I understand here is that this family bought in good faith. What they thought was an existing and approved commercial operation. They may have changed what was done out of the garage. But the fact that commerce was the purpose of what was done out of the garage was just to continue. Thank you.
Any other member of the board which.
Just a quick question for Tammy, the use. Of the business is correct. I mean, I live down the street, so it's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The only issue is that the lot is too small, correct?
That's correct.
That and the two, and the house that's on the lot has certain requirements that would.
Well, yeah, that's true. I mean, that, you know, it's, I have a photo, I could share the photo that shows.
This is all pre-existing, you're talking of twenty-plus years.
Yeah, it was right, it was a two-family home, permits were issued for garage, but not for commercial use, just for construction of garage. You know, for storage of either vehicles or household goods.
But they already had.
That says commercial use in that permit? Did you take a look? I'm assuming.
It doesn't say that in the permit. It says a one-story detached garage twenty-four by twenty-four. But there's another garage on the property at the time. So. I was told by the, you know, my clients that this was for a, it says approved use mechanical. So I don't know what that means. I would assume it means some kind of business. I mean, I was told there was some kind of car repair business there. So that was what that extra-large twenty-four by twenty-four, in addition to the existing, there are three. There are three buildings on that property, correct, Tammy?
Correct, there's the residential structure and then the two outbuildings, the two.
And two outbuildings, so two different garages, so.
In many cases, those would just be used for the storage of the vehicles for the residents. And I think that's one of the difficulties here is that. There's, because it's such a tight lot, you've already got the use of it for two residential dwellings. Then to try to accommodate, I think what's happening is these large trucks, the, you know, the landscaper trucks, they're blocking up the site.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I wasn't clear, does the business operator live on the site?
The business owner does not live on the site. There are people that have been there for twenty years that. Work in the business, but the owner, the Mandu, Mandu Hano family does not live on that site.
All right, thank you.
Is there any member of the public wishes to speak in favor of this application? Tammy? Anybody waving their hand?
Yeah, I don't see anybody. If you'd like to participate, please raise your hand and we'll bring you over to speak.
Well, the. Listed as Nancy Aldrich, even though Nancy Aldrich is here twice.
Because I had to, I had to send him the Zoom link.
To speak, so I don't know how you get to him and how you identify.
It's Javier Mandu Hano Junior, is he, if he's allowed to speak, I'm certainly.
I don't know why he wouldn't be.
Okay, great.
Luis Javier Mandu Hano, son of Javier Mandu Hano Senior. As Nancy mentioned. I was working in New York City for about nine years. I'm at twenty-nine Heather Lane. I own here in Norwalk as well and. My father suffered, this October sixteenth would be two years now that we've been managing. The business with my mother and, you know, we just tried to continue what was up and running prior and, you know, we. Didn't know of any, anything that needed to be, you know, done through paperwork or anything. If not, I would have taken it. You know, into my hands to doing so the right way. You know, from the get, or, you know, if, if it was, any issue was aware, you know, raised to me, but. You know, that's, that's the only reason why we're in the business is because he can't attend the business anymore and, you know, this is what. Our bread and butter is daily and it helps pay for his hospital bills till this day and. All the PT and speech therapy he continues to need as well as to support my family as well. And, you know. I'd really appreciate it if you take into consideration, you know, give us, you know, the. The benefit of, of this situation and, you know, you. Realizing it's an industrial and commercial zone and, you know, we're just, we get out early in the morning and, you know, we're not in and out the whole day. Just in and out in the morning and late in the evening as well and that's all we, we really do at the premises.
How, how old is the house? When has the house, when was it built? Just curious.
Nancy has that information.
Eighteen ninety. Eighteen ninety. It doesn't look like an eighteen ninety house, but that's what the, I did a search, title search and that's what the. Property says.
How much material, landscape material is stored on site?
No large equipment, no, there are things like shovels, there's no big piles of dirt, there's none of that stuff. It's. It's not a huge business, it's a. You know, it's a business run by this family and they don't store anything other than things like shovels and picks and things like that. In the, in a smaller space, not in the, in the big.
I'm asking about on-site.
Yes, vehicles are on-site. Not all the time, but they come as, as Mr., as Javier Mandu, Javi Mandu.
Do they come and park the landscaping vehicles on the site, not in the garages?
Yes, they come.
How many vehicles?
We currently have three vehicles.
Stored on-site.
Yeah, they're in the far left corner, they're out of, you know, firefighters, gas, oil needs to get in, anyone, you know, can get in. And they're out by seven fifteen in the morning and they're back late in the evening.
What do you use that garage for?
Just storing equipment, that's it.
One of the difficulties we've always had with contractor yards is the definition. And I don't think we've ever done anything about having like many contractor yards and large contractor yards. And so once you have approval for a contractor's yard, you can bring in stoneworks. You can file stuff up ten feet high, I mean, that's what the approval will. So the problematic to give approval for that. Who was complaining? Because you have a retail neighbor to one side and you have an industrial business to the other side. I'm a little bit of the losses, who's complaining about this?
It's one individual who moved there recently. Javi, why don't you say, I, I forget his name.
His name, his first name is Chris, his last name, I don't know.
It's a Greek name, I have a name.
Is he nearby?
He's right across the street. And complains to the car wash guys after. You know, they, they start business after eight AM and he goes and harasses them. He harasses his next-door neighbors when they simply have a cookout in the afternoon because of the smell of meat. He, he sits there and records on his phone. Anytime that we're backing into the driveway and. Has made racist remarks as well to, you know, some of the workers. So, you know, he's. I don't know if it's the age, you know, he's very. You know, bitter with us and we don't.
The, the complaint listed as Kevin.
Am I missing something in terms of the definition of a contractor's yard? Educate me, is there something else we could call it? I mean, I don't know. No, no, I thought so.
There, there's no variance for like landscaper thing or limiting, could you do a variance to limit the amount of trucks or other things that? So there's not stonework or trucks? I mean, is there a way to do a, a variance that's different? Can you structure your own?
We require a text amendment because contractors store yard includes all, all trades.
Yeah, we don't store any stonework though, or any firewood or anything like that. It's just literally a few vehicles and.
Yeah, so that wasn't the issue. The issue is once you give the approval.
Right, but can't you, but isn't there a way to get limited approval? Like literally write your own?
There is, you did.
Unfortunately, variance runs with the land.
No, but we could do an exception for two years and it's not renewable. So two years from now, when the exception would expire, you're done. So you would have to solve the intervening problems. One solution would be to try to get the zoning board. To have approvals for small landscaping yards. That would be one possibility and then we write the zoning code as we speak. So that, that's a possibility. You didn't ask for an exception, unfortunately. But that could be done and, and exceptions can accept the requirements of the zoning. That's exactly what it is.
Well, can I modify my, my request? And ask for another hearing date?
Well, you could ask for an continuation and then modify it so that anybody in the public would know it. And could react to it.
I think we needed an application, so that it is distinct.
I can do.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
Well, I think that. You know, I mean, we've heard it off a lot. And I think that. Tammy is correct. I think it would need a new application. You know, specifically directed to that modification. Rather than asking for variance. Because I think the variance is very problematic in the way it's been. Presented to us.
Well, it's unartful, but an exception would do, do the job and, and again, it's for two years and it's non-renewable.
So that unfortunately, at the end of two years. The property owner would relinquish all rights to operate.
The contractor.
A contractor's yard. In any way, shape, manner or form.
Yeah, and the only thing that he could try to pursue is a landscaper yard that is less intensive. And get that in the zoning code somehow. We're not that body, we don't set regulations, that's not.
I understand.
Just give me a brief moment just to review this special exception, but, because I. I just want to clarify that it's not to switch from one non-conforming use to another.
From one what?
There is a two-year exception and remember the, our friendly lawyer, we're discussing. Cranberry School sent us that little note and the note included that. As a list of.
Okay, this would be grant without renewal, temporary and conditional zoning approval for not more than two years for uses in contravention. Okay, gotcha.
That's the one I was looking at, but I thought that was only for the appeals. I didn't think I could apply for it now.
Well, you're, you're actually applying for it after now. And because remember, you got to tell the public what you're doing. So they got to have time to react, so we can't just switch you tonight from. Variance request to the exception request.
I get it, okay.
In the meantime, you'd have to be very busy telling zoning, you know, come on. How many landscapers do we have in the city and how many of them have small amounts of equipment that definitely can fit in a smaller space than a contractor yard?
Right, right. I can research that and figure that out and I think.
A note while you're rewriting the zoning code that you're doing right now.
Right, right. That, that sounds like that's creative solution. I appreciate that. That's something that we can, we can, I can work on.
Yeah, as long as your client understands that if you did go the exception route, that it does expire in two years and. We are prohibited from renewing it.
Right, I see that in the, I was looking at that, yeah.
And I don't have a law degree, so don't rely on me.
All right, and there's nothing to permit a change from a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Is there any other not? That would be the other smaller landscaping yard, that kind of thing?
Only if we were less non-conforming.
And if it were legally non-conforming.
Less, okay, yes, legally non-conforming, thank you.
All right, that doesn't sound like it's gonna fly, okay. And there's, and the special exception. We can't do for a, an adjoining lot, that doesn't work, okay. I'm just trying to think of anything, all right.
No, they're just a, a suspension of zoning requirements. That's what the, what we're talking about.
Right, right.
That's why it's limited in time.
And then even if it's limited in time, you, no matter what it ends, so even if the zoning moratorium, I mean, the. Moratorium ends for permits, you can't during that two-year period get a permit?
You know, I, I, I don't know. That's where you'd have to ask somebody who's got a lot of background in land use, but I would think that you could. I don't know what would bar you from doing it.
That was a thought I had.
If there were a change in the zoning law and then you wanted to use that change to ask for an approval. I don't know why you'd be barred from that.
Sounds good. So in terms of setting another hearing, once I file that, is it, am I on that same schedule for October twenty? Twenty-one?
Course of action for us is probably to deny you without prejudice, which lets you come back. Without having to wait, what, six months? I forget what the time.
That's only if they're asking for another variance. I think it's okay because they're asking for a separate. Review.
It's could be a different application.
Okay.
So Nancy, are you withdrawing or you just want to get the vote or what do you, what do you want to?
I think it's, is it, is, wouldn't it be best to withdraw so I could file that new one? I don't want to hold matters up. For you and I think I need to file it and ask for this, that. And file the whole new form. That's what I think, but I, I will, I will, no, you don't think so?
No, you could, that's probably not a bad way to go.
Right, I think that would be the way to do. I think I'd withdraw now and then, and reapply and. You can tell me my deadline or whatever it is I have to do, I'll do that.
Well, thank you, Nancy. Appreciate your efforts.
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time and I know this is a long night and. A lot of, a lot of, you have a lot of interesting issues in front of you as I was listening before, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening.
We really appreciate it and God bless you all. Thank you.
To my fellow board members, I have to sign off. I've got a very early therapy session tomorrow. I need to get some sleep. I'm already out of it, so I'm going to bid you all a good night.
Good night, Lee.
Good night.
I don't know that we want to continue with just four of us. That's a bit up to the next applicant rather than us, though. Unless anybody else has to get out of here right now.
I need to check, Mr. Mr. Conroy, members of the commission, I would need to check with my client to see if he wants to proceed with a four member board. So if you indulge me just a couple of minutes to get in contact with him.
Yeah, take two, but not more.
Thank you.
Andy, would it be inappropriate to skip ahead to the next item because they want to ask for a continuation?
Uh, no, would not be inappropriate. Let's do that. Make sure I don't get lost here. Are we talking dash oh three item or what?
Yes, the, the prospect.
Yeah. I mean, I'll go ahead and read it as the secretary role. Do we have enough board members that can hang in for the next half hour or so? All right, terrific. You could too, Ted. All right. I'm good for half an hour, but you know, I'm going to get tired by that point. It's twenty one oh nine sixteen oh three, Norwalk SNFF Acquisition Group LLC. Various of rooftop mechanical setback and screening requirement for existing commercial building in a D residence zone, property located at twenty three Prospect Street, District One, Block nineteen, Lot thirteen B. Applicant seeks variance from setback and screening requirements and rooftop background, because that's not care, is a skilled nursing facility which has granted multiple variances, sixty four, fifty seven, sixty nine, seventy, seventy one, seventy, ninety seven. These are not years, they're numbers, nineteen seventy one, seventeen ninety two and nineteen eighty two. Is that correct or did we have a screwed up year number in there?
Those were years of the
Right, so seventeen ninety two, I guarantee.
That's not correct. No, sorry.
For expansion. Most recently, the board granted an additional variance with conditions in two thousand and twenty to allow expansions of the parking to accommodate in half the dialysis only. I do remember that. Conditions included requiring installation of as much landscaping as the site can handle. Analysis and finding the applicant asserts the existing ground level fencing provides screening due to viewing angle and height of building. However, the writer of this does not find that hardship identified in this case. They have a request and that is for continuation. Cause they have more work to do. Uh, I don't have an issue with that. Anybody else have an issue with it? Speak up if you do.
No.
All right. So the continuation is granted and they can come back and see us again soon.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good night.
Good night. And we're back to Ms. Sasha.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy and members of the CBA. My client has decided to postpone till the next meeting when there's a five member board. And would that be the October twenty first agenda?
I think we're getting awfully full up on October twenty first. I mean, really like overfull, overflowing. So you sure you want to do that?
Yeah, we would prefer to, to have a five member board and this matter would not take an inordinate amount of time. I think it's rather straightforward.
I thought so. That's why I thought they might just want to proceed. And so if that's what you wish, then that's what we shall do.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy and other members.
All right, thanks.
We'll see you next month.
It's clear for the board members, when somebody decides that they will not take the chance needing four affirmative votes and they only have a four member board, they can opt out. And that's what they've done. Are we okay on everything? Does anybody have anything they wanted to discuss?
You want to roll the minutes over to the next one too?
I don't want to hold anything over. We're getting to the point where we're going to have a hell of a meeting. I'm going to ask everybody to take a nap in the afternoon so that we can have a late one. Anybody want to move approval of the minutes? Y'all move approval. Anybody second it? All right, Marilyn and Ted. So with those, all favor say aye? Or raise your hand, yes. Dumb, good. All right. So it passes. How about an adjournment since nobody wants to discuss anything?
Before we adjourn, let me just ask, if we have a mounting pile of applications, it does seem at least a courtesy to consider a meeting an extra time to attack the pile.
You know, let Tammy talk to the chairman about that. That is a good suggestion. And we have had to do that, not often, but maybe once a year, things just get tough and we have to have another meeting that's not scheduled. So you might want to discuss that with lead tomorrow if you can. And I'm sure we, as many members would be receptive as possible. But we do have some issues and you know what they are about people not being in town. And that becomes problematic for us. And the fact that we're down one person, we have an alternate slot open is not helping.
Yep, I'll check in with Lee tomorrow.
Okay, terrific.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, yeah, second.
Second.
All favor, aye. We'll see you guys. Take care.